Oh.
Okay.
I, you know what, I didn't.
Good evening and welcome to the February 20th meeting of our Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the request to speak cards. A reminder to everyone that request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll, Commissioner Leibig?
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Do we have anything? Okay, we'll go on to correspondence and staff communication.
Yes, thank you Chair Perez. Two items of correspondence tonight. The first, before you, should have a memo from our clerk Katie Rogers regarding some additions to the minutes, and we would ask that when we get to that item tonight that you include these matters as part of your motion. And then, secondly, you should have an item from Sandra White regarding item number three before you. If you don't have any of either of those or both of those memos, please let us know and we'll get you a copy. And that's all for staff communications.
Thank you. Disclosure of expertise communications from any planning commissioners?
Yes, I have spoken with Charlotte Dorsey regarding item number three.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes of our February 6th meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes as amended. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On to our regular agenda. Item number two, public hearing regarding the 3,600 to 3,620 Industrial Boulevard tentative parcel map.
Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening Chair Perez and members of the commission. This item is a request for approval of a tentative parcel map creating two parcels from one 6.84 acre parcel. Parcel one is proposed to be 4.36 acres. Parcel two is proposed to be 2.47 acres. The project site contains two existing buildings and approximately 65,000 square foot building which would be located on parcel one and an approximately 30,900 square foot building to be located on parcel two. The parcel map is being requested to facilitate placing the buildings on their own separate parcels. The project is located on Industrial Boulevard near the intersection of Parkway Boulevard and is also located northwest of the Port of West Sacramento. The two shell, two shell buildings were originally constructed on the project site in 2001. For the existing buildings, the tenant improvements were completed between 2006 and 2007. The project is located in the BP zone and meets all city lot creation standards regarding lot size, lot depth, the width ratio and floor area ratio. The project is located in PD 38, which allows for a mixture of office and light industrial uses. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is in attendance should you have some questions for him. It's respectfully recommended that the Planning Commission adopt the project subject to the conditions in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the commissioners have anything?
I think you should ask the applicant if he'd like to speak.
Oh. Applicant, would you like to speak?
Evening, I'm David Sidiki. And I'm with JTS Engineering. I've read the staff report. Conditions are all acceptable, so if there are any questions, I can answer them otherwise.
Any commissioners have any questions? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing since.
I have a question though.
Okay.
I actually have a couple of questions on the staff report here. You know, one of the things we were talking about on the north building, I noticed there's an application for alcohol. Do you know what that is going to be?
Probably, the Young's Market is one of the tenants in there.
Maybe that's what it's for.
And I believe they are, that's a wholesale operation from there. It's not, it's not retail.
On the project conditions, on condition four, Kathy, it says that this thing's going to expire in 36 months. Isn't it supposed to say something like if they don't file the map with the county? Can't expire if we approve it, can it?
Well, they have 36 months to move the map to final map stage.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And take it through the final map stage.
Isn't it supposed to say something like that in this condition?
I don't know. This is how our standard condition for this generally reads.
Okay, then, just because I didn't understand that, I always thought that we said that you have 36 months to file the map or the thing with the county that records this.
Yeah, they would, they have 36 months to complete and record the final map.
And then, down in the next section on engineering, it says the frontage on Industrial Boulevard shall be improved as necessary. What are you thinking there? What improvement would you do on industrial?
That would be the purview of the engineering department should they deem that some improvements are, are necessary prior to finaling of the final map. Mark didn't specify what those might be.
More than likely, you could be talking about driveway approaches if they don't meet, you know, the current cross slope requirements, you know, things like that, but clearly there's curb gutter, sidewalks, streetlights, all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's all there. That's why I was asking. And, and the next one, of course, is reciprocal access for parking and stuff. And that's always been in those conditions out there prior. Are we just making sure that it is when they file the map that it continues?
The, the reason engineering did that is because there are the two buildings on one parcel now and the parking is shared and they wanted to ensure that the parking remained shared between the two buildings, hence the request for the reciprocal access agreement.
And we're just trying to make sure that that's still part of the filing of the map?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sandy?
And I have one suggestion, just adding a word under condition 14. I think it, I think you probably, or we probably want to have, the engineering division will provide additional comments as additional city reviews occur. Is that correction?
Yes.
So take B and make it provide. That's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Leibig?
Staff answered my question already, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now.
I would make a motion that we approve agenda item number two.
Second?
With the additional change in condition 14.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, with the change in item number 14.
Thank you. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Carrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Item number two passes.
May I read the tentative map appeal procedure, please? Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commissioner's matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number three.
And I apologize, I need to recuse myself from this.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senior Planner Sandra White will present this item.
Good evening Chair person Perez and members of the planning commission. The planning commission conducted a public workshop on this item on February 6th, and at that workshop, the planning commission requested follow-up information on parking provided in other assisted living projects in the region, the adequacy of the project's handicap parking, traffic signal improvements, future development on the public open space zone parcel and the public transit improvements. Just as an introduction, this is an application for an assisted living facility located at 2305 Jefferson Boulevard. The applicant is requesting entitlements for a tentative parcel map, conditional use permit and a zoning administrative parking modification. Based on staff's research relative to parking, there is no established standard or a parking ratio used for determining the number of parking spaces for this type of project in the region. Some of the cities base the parking on the number of beds and some cities do not have a parking standard. The parking ratios for the other facilities developed by the applicant are approximately .4 spaces per unit, which is a ratio that is being proposed for this project. And also, this ratio is the ratio that is used in the Institute of Traffic Engineers studies as well. Segueing into handicap parking, a minimum of three handicap parking spaces are required for 73 spaces. The applicant is proposing to provide four handicap spaces, so they are meeting the requirement for handicap parking spaces. As far as the existing traffic signal is concerned, this was evaluated in a 2006 traffic study, and that traffic study envisioned development on this site, and it was planned that as this site develops, along with some of the other sites along Jefferson Boulevard, the existing traffic signal would function as a four-way signal. The planning commission expressed concern regarding the future development on proposed parcel two, which is on public open space. And in the staff report, it states that the Parks and Recreation Department wanted to explore the feasibility of using the site for open space uses, and after the staff report was written, they have since indicated that they are not interested in the site, so rezoning the site will be revisited as part of the general plan update. Lastly, the planning commission requested information regarding public transit improvements. In my communications, telephone communications with the Yolo County Transit Authority, they indicated that a letter would be forthcoming regarding public transit improvements recommended for this project. I have yet to receive that letter, but the agency staff indicated that a bus shelter and a turnpike lane would be required for the existing bus stop on Jefferson Boulevard. As an alternative or option for the city to consider, the agency indicated that they would allow that bus stop on Jefferson Boulevard to be relocated to the gateway side of, drive side of the project, but we don't feel that that would be the appropriate location for a bus stop. And so, in anticipation of receiving the letter, staff has drafted some conditions regarding improving the existing bus stop located on Jefferson Boulevard. After the public workshop on February 6th, it was brought to staff's attention that this project should go to the commission on aging, and the commission held a special meeting as an informational item on February 18th regarding this project. That commission asked questions regarding staffing, the background and history of the company that has been selected to operate the facility. The commission was very concerned about patient safety since there will be memory care units located on the second floor and the measures that would be in place to protect the safety of the residents. In addition to housing memory care residents on the second story, the commission also expressed concern regarding the potential for residents to wander off the project site since this would be located, you know, on a major arterial. And relative to patient safety, and the developer can expand on this, the developer indicated that a slate of measures, safety measures would be utilized, such as cameras, alarm doors and pad sensors. And lastly, the commission also asked questions regarding cost and affordability for low-income seniors. The commission asked the developer to consider setting aside one or two beds for low-income seniors using Medi-Cal, and the commission, as an example, used the city's inclusionary ordinance, which is not applicable to this project, as their reasoning for this request. So the developer indicated that they would look at the possibility of doing so. All the findings can be made for recommending approval of the proposed tentative parcel map, the conditional use permit and the zoning administrative parking modification. We are recommending that the planning commission find that the project is consistent with the Southport Framework Plan guidelines as to how the land use mix should be applied for projects located in the town center mixed-use district. At the workshop, the planning commission did not provide any direction as to how staff should proceed on this policy issue, so we are recommending that the land use mix in the district be based on the total acreage located in the district. This concludes my presentation. We are recommending additional conditions of approval, which is shown in your memo, regarding public transfer improvements and parking for emergency vehicles. Staff is recommending that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, certify that the planning commission has determined that the mitigated negative declaration is the appropriate level of environmental review under CEQA, and finds that the mitigated negative declaration represents the independent judgment of the city. Approve the requested tentative parcel map subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report. Approve the requested conditional use permit subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report. Ratify the zoning administrator's approval of a parking modification to allow .41 parking spaces per unit and approve the mitigation monitoring plan.
Thank you Sandra. Do we have any questions for Sandra?
Thank you, yes, before we open up the public hearing. Sandra, why wouldn't we include inclusionary housing in this project? If it's considered, if it would be considered residential, which we haven't quite determined yet, would inclusionary housing for low income not be included?
I don't think, I don't believe it's included. No, it's not included. It's not defined as being included. This is more like an assistant living facility, independent living. It doesn't, it's not like a multi-family housing where you have each resident living independently of each other either. If, if you think of like a dormitory sort of like.
I get that. We still need to come up with a land use designation for the property, right? One is to determine, or getting the other is to also determine type.
For, as far as land use is concerned, we consider this a residential care facility.
Okay, so that actually sounds reasonable, and at that point, that's why inclusionary housing would not be included. Thank you. For clarification on attachment three, that cell phone tower came back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. That is not being proposed as part of this project. I keep forgetting to.
Do, do we actually need to state that it's not included?
We can put, we can provide a condition on there, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
That's it until after the public hearing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I might have one question. And this question probably is for Sandra, but it is for maybe the applicant to think about too. First off, I'd like to tell you that I think this is a great project, and Sandra, I love the way you were able to get the applicant to put up a bus shelter without, they probably didn't even realize they wanted to do something like that, but I thought that was a great idea. I'm down to public open space, and we have public open space, and we are going to use part of that open space to park on, and then later on in life, talk about doing a general plan amendment to let them do something else with it. And I just don't understand how we can take public open space and change it and allow them to use it for parking for their facility.
Okay, this is a way that I.
And I know we've talked three or four times and we.
Yes, we've talked about it.
We still don't quite agree with this.
Okay, let me, let me see, I can help you understand a little bit better. Parking as a primary use is not allowed in the public open space zone. This would certainly be applicable if parking was located on a separate lot. You just put a, you just can't, you just can't put a parking space, a parking lot on a parcel zone, public open space without having a primary use, okay?
I agree.
All right. So in this instance, we have a situation where 16 parking spaces are proposed to be low-cutted on a lot that has two zones. It has a mixed-use zone and approximately 8,200 square feet of parcel one is zone public open space. And those 16 parking spaces would be associated with a primary use located in the mixed-use zone. And so, for those reasons, we don't see that it would be a conflict with allowing parking on that portion of the parcel that's on public open space.
But as you said in your, your comments, we were going to review this in the general plan.
That is correct.
And at that time, we may want to change it. Well, we haven't changed it yet.
That is true.
From open space. Therefore, it's still open space and really, their project might not work if they don't have the parking. I guess my comment is, while I love the project, and I think I've told the applicant and you that I really think this is something that we need in our town, I'm just questioning whether we should do the lot split and having two separate parcels at this time, because it just seems to me that until it's done, you should do it in a process. And the process is, we do the general plan amendment first and look at it, and then, if we say it's not going to be public space, then you park on it. But I just don't know how we do a lot split and then let them go ahead and park on open space. It just doesn't, it doesn't pass the smell test. There's something wrong with what we're doing in our process. But it doesn't mean that it's bad, it just, I don't quite think that that's what we should be doing. I think it, we shouldn't make the lot split until such time as we've gone through the general plan amendments. Okay.
For clarification, are you looking at attachment number three?
I'm not looking at anything. I'm just talking.
Because I want to make sure that we're not talking about parking on proposed parcel two where they're showing, you know, getting a site visa, site feasibility study.
Okay, which one do you want me to look at, three?
Attachment three.
Yes ma'am.
See if we can help on this. So I think, really, I think the crux of your question, and attachment three is the proper, you know, exhibit to look at. They have shown the zone line on there, and the parking that's of issue here is.
That's correct.
Approximately five spaces along the east edge of the property that's listed in there that would be kind of over the border of the open, into the open space zone property. So the remaining, you know, parking in the retail building on there is shown for, you know, conceptual purposes, so that from a map back standpoint, we can show that the property, you know, is, you know, developable, even if it doesn't ever get developed.
Well, and, but see David, I'm not disagreeing. What I'm saying is that, that little diagonal line that says zone, the zone line.
Yes.
That's, that's kind of a border, that's probably, you know, to me, I'm looking at it as a property line, because that, everything north of that is open space. And now we want to take it and say, well, we're going to use a little bit of that, and we're just going to move that line over a little bit so it all fits, and that's our new property line. Well, I just don't know how you move the zone line to the property line and make it like it didn't happen before. I mean, it's there. That's what we have is open space. I'm not saying that what you did isn't bad. I'm not saying anything about it, but it's open space and it's not supposed to be used for them to make their project work.
Well, parking, you know, could be something that could be done in a public open space zone property, you know, as part of a larger effort. For example, one of the item ideas that the Parks Department was kicking around for this property is, you know, should we put a little trailhead in here and put a few parking spaces there so that people could access, you know, the trail one way or the other? So that, that was one, you know, one way that we might, you know, consider it. I mean, here realistically, we have five or so parking spaces that are over into the open space zone, but that's still not the primary use of that open space parcel. The primary use of that open space parcel is yet to be determined, quite frankly, and we will look at that property through the general plan to see if an open space designation still, you know, makes sense going forward.
But again, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, that we're going to look at it, but we haven't done that yet, and that's why I'm struggling, why this can't just stay one parcel. I don't understand.
Well, we can certainly have the applicant inform on, you know, why they wish to divide the property and not acquire, you know, all of it from the underlying, you know, property owner, but you're really the difference.
I'm sorry, I, it's kind of funny with the other talk going on.
Yes it is.
But, you know, all I'm saying is, I don't see why it's necessary that we split the parcel tonight, when it's still open space and until they go through the general plan amendment, it's going to remain open space, and they should, if they're going to have all the property, then sure, if you want to put it on there, go ahead, but I mean, you know that if it remains open space, those parcels, those parking spots might go away.
So. Yeah, there's nothing that says you can't park on a public open space zone property. It just, it just can't be a parking lot by itself.
I know, but I may want to, you know, as a planning commissioner, I may say that I want to make that a garden, all that open space a garden tomorrow. And if that were true, those parking spots would go away. So I don't know. I, my dilemma with this is, while I love the project, I think the project is perfect, and it's something very well needed in our city, I question whether we can take public open space and arbitrarily allow parking on it without going through a general plan amendment. And all the difference would be is they wouldn't get the lot split tonight until they go through the process. So, I just not sure, you have somebody sitting next to you that's much smarter than me and will tell us what the legal opinion is, but I, I just didn't understand that David, and that's my question.
Yeah, I think, you know, part of where we've been, you know, struggling with this a little bit even in our last meeting was, you know, maybe some of the terminology here. I mean, this property has a public open space zone on it. It is not a, it's privately owned, it is not a dedicated, you know, public open space property with a conservation easement on it or, you know, anything of that nature. So, you know, we look at it, it's how the zoning is, just like any other property, and what does that zoning allow? And so, the public open space zone, although it does not allow for parking as a primary use, it does not say, it does not say that you can't park, have any parking on it at all, especially if that parking is associated with another use on that same property.
Well, isn't that the key word as a primary use? I mean, that's kind of how I look at it.
But it is a primary use.
Well, the parking that we're in question here would be on the same lot as the assisted living facility. It's over the zone boundary a little bit.
But that's because we have arbitrarily said we don't think that needs to be open space. And I just don't know how we arbitrarily take that away. That's, that's where I'm struggling with this, is it seems like this isn't a decision that we're going through, an amendment to the general plan. We're just saying, eh, I don't think we're going to need it, so we're not going to do it. I just don't know how we do that. That just doesn't seem right to me, that we do it that way. Okay, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a clarifying question? David or Sandra? Can we split the lot without changing the zoning tonight?
Yes.
So, so actually, that gets, so if we're not prepared for a development plan for the smaller parcel, parcel two, why are we actually changing it to mixed use as part of this project?
Well, we are not changing any zoning tonight. We have stated that we will, we would like to look at that northern end of the property in the general plan as to see if a public open space designation remains where we want to go, you know, going through. go, you know, going forward to 2035, you know, in the general plan. But our, since they have been a parcel map here proposed, we do have to make sure that both properties, you know, meet at least the basic tests that our subdivision ordinance and the map act provide, and that's things like access and access to utilities and roads and things like that. So we've done that. The ultimate use of that property will be determined at some, you know, future date. All we know is that our city does not want it for any type of public park or similar type feature. So we also would rather not have that property or make it kind of, you know, become some kind of no man's land that is unusable for anything, you know, going forward, especially at such a, you know, prominent location.
And you see, David, that's exactly what I'm getting at, is we keep squeezing it down. We're making it so small, pretty soon it's not good for anything. And then, what are we going to do with that little bit at the end? You know, and I, to me, you develop it, at least if you don't split it tonight, you haven't done anything to harm this project. You just haven't moved the zone. And until we have the general plan amendment, and we're able to talk to the Parks Department, and you've talked to the Parks Department, but maybe the Parks Commission may have an idea, I heard of a horse group that wanted to put a staging area in that area, or across the street. But I mean, it's just a thought, and I'm just going, wow, that's kind of weird, you know, that we, I just think we should think twice before we take away the property line tonight. The rest of it, I mean, just makes the project work.
If I could add a point of clarification to this, while it's true that there's a component of the property that includes open space, because the small portion of parking that's going to be included on the first parcel is ancillary to the assisted living facility, it's not considered to be a use that's inconsistent with that open space designation. In fact, it's allowed. And just by analogy, or as another example, even if we have open space designated in the city and we develop a park, we certainly allow parking ancillary to that park to allow folks access to it. So that's sort of the best analogy that I could provide. The other thing I just wanted to clarify, that a rezone is not before you tonight. The only reason why that was addressed at all is the potential for change for that little portion of that triangle in the future, if it's determined that a better type of use is appropriate in that area.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Okay.
Do we have any commissioners that have any questions for the applicant?
I have, I have one. I'm sorry, Ava. Go ahead.
I do, I do want an elaboration on the safety measures that will be taking place for the concerns that were raised by the aging commission.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Do you have a specific question, or?
I understand that you will have cameras and a security door, things like that, but will there be a retaining wall or something to kind of slow them from going out?
No. You know, one of the things that came up at the aging commission was a discussion about fencing. And you have to be careful to make it look like a prison, and then there's issues with traffic coming in and out, and there's actually dangers in not having the ability to get away from the building in case of fire or any type of emergency. So everything as far as security purposes is concerned is done on the inside of the building. Now, there are cameras on the outside of the building as well at the entrances and We wouldn't remain in business if our customers were wandering out of our building, and we're going to do whatever it takes to keep them inside and safe. So, and as new technologies come around and make it more efficient, we'll be looking at those as well. So we'll be using the latest technology, you know, to make sure things like that don't happen.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Well, you said the Alzheimer's section, or the...
Emery case.
Not just the assisted living, but the Alzheimer's is actually a lockdown facility, right?
Yes.
So they cannot get out easily.
No.
I mean, you just can't open the door and walk out.
No.
It takes a while to get out.
Correct.
And we discussed that before, that that, the only question that came up after all this in my mind was the stairway on the second floor? We talked that you were going to have a way to look down to the second, from the second floor to the first floor. Is there a protective railing that goes on the stairway to prevent them from going up and down the stairs, or is that necessary?
I have my expert construction personnel. Tom Weber, would you like to address that? Okay.
I know some walk, most of them walk, well, my mother happened to be someone that had Alzheimer's. She could walk anywhere.
And again, you know, we're regulated by the state as well.
That's true.
And so they make sure that we meet all those requirements, which is primarily for the safety and well-being of the occupants. So, again, we, those guidelines are there for minimum. We exceed those guidelines because, you know, it's the right thing to do, and it's good business. I mean, you know, protecting the people that are in the building are the primary concern. That's why they're there.
And again, you know, we're regulated by the state as well.
That's true.
And so they make sure that we meet all those requirements, which is primarily for the safety and well-being of the occupants. So, again, we're...
That's why I brought them.
If anyone's going to speak on the side, we would need them to come to the podium, please.
Okay.
So it can be on record.
You know, it's the right thing to do, and it's good business. I mean, you know, protecting the people that are in the building are the primary concern.
Any more questions? Commissioner Lee, babe?
Thank you. While you're up here.
Sure.
This gets to Charlie's. Actually, I agree with him a hundred percent on the public open space. It's just this, there's a use, it's there, that's why it's there. As far as rezoning, I actually didn't catch that, that wasn't on the agenda this evening. So it's, makes this a little bit easier. Can this project go forward without dividing the parcels tonight?
Okay, so before I get to that question, I'd like to answer, I believe a couple people have tried, so I'm going to try. Not that I could do any better, but regardless of the land is split or not, those parking spaces are going to be there, and they're going to be technically on an open space location. So whether there's a parcel split or not, those parking places still stay in the open space area.
Okay, so...
And the reason is, is because it's an ancillary use for a primary. So the primary use on that one side is the assisted living center. The portion that the parking spaces are in will always be on parcel one. Whether there's a parcel split or not, they'll always be on parcel one. So if you don't approve the parcel split, it doesn't change anything. The parking spaces remain in open space. So what happens is, the whole parcel, technically, we could park the entire, back me up on this one. If we don't subdivide, we could literally park the whole thing in open space, because it's a primary, the primary use is assisted living, and you can park on open space. So you're more likely to get a parking lot on that if you don't do the parcel split. Does that make sense to you?
But my two big question would be, if we put a garden on there, we say, we're going to have a garden, a garden section for the neighbors to use. That's what we're going to use that open space for. Now what happens to you? You don't have enough parking spots.
I believe, no, that's not true. You, I need help over there, Ma. Okay, it's not true. We can park there legally, as it is, in an open space now. You can't tell us we can't park there. Because it is a, even though that portion of open space says open space, because it's on our parcel and the primary use is the assisted living, you can legally park there. You can't tell us we can't park there, is what I'm getting at.
But see, you're trying to split.
Right. The split doesn't, like I said, and I'd like to really get this squared away, so I got plenty of time, so.
I'm retired, so do I.
So...
They are, they're, they're upset.
So, so here's the deal. If you don't approve the parcel split, I can put a parking lot on the entire piece of open space legally, because my primary use on that parcel, the big parcel, is the assisted living center. And so the ancillary use, it's a, I guess I'm not doing any better.
I get that.
Right. So if you split it, however, I can't park on it until the general plan amendment changes the zoning to allow me to park on it. So really, by not doing the parking split, you're going to get just the opposite of what you want.
We could get...
You could get, correct. So you're actually protecting that piece for you guys to control what the use is by doing the split. Is that, did I put that correctly?
Well, I would phrase it slightly differently, but we get to the same, we get to the same conclusion in the end, that parking as a primary use would not be allowed in the open space zone. So, but it's, doesn't state that you still, you cannot park in there. As a matter of fact, if this property were proposed to be acquired by the city, which it is not, we do not intend to purchase it for any type of public purpose, at least at this point in time, then it remains a privately owned property, and it's subject to the basic zoning that the, whatever the open space zone allows for. So in this, in this context, what our applicant is stating here is substantially correct, that in a way, by doing this parcel map, now you have a property that's divided, that's primarily zoned open space, and thus, that will sharply limit what can be done on that property as long as the open space designation remains. Were this property not proposed to be divided, and parking were put on there for the assisted living facility, we would not consider that to be the primary use of the open space zoning, and thus, they would be allowed to do it. It's perhaps somewhat of a technicality, but it is something that has come up several times, where we have parking or parking, is parking being provided, or is parking the primary use of the property? We have done a couple of use permits in the last several years, where people have developed a parking lot on a property, and that was all that was there. And we did a use perm for that as parking as a primary use. So, you know, in this context, you know, the parking spaces, albeit on a portion of the property that's own open space, since that's not the primary use of that property for parking, and it's related back to the assisted living facility, which we would consider to be the primary use of the property, in our mind, how it's proposed is an acceptable application.
So to go one step further, actually, by doing the parcel map tonight, what it does is it allows the planning staff to have more of an input of what goes on there ultimately, through the general plan amendment that they're going through, which is going to take, I've been told, a year or two. So, but at that time, if they designate it as open space then, that's fine. If they want a little retail there for the trail or whatever, that's fine too. But what it does is it allows that piece to be controlled by the city, which was the original intent when we thought it was going to be a park. And that's why we proposed the parcel map, was so that it would be a clean break, and we wouldn't be on title. So it's an odd situation, but it actually works better for everybody if it's divided. So that's why we want it divided. I know it sounds odd, but it's true.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee, can you...
Oh, I was waiting for Charlie. I thought you were still going. I don't want to keep beating this one up, but now I have another question. There's sixteen spaces, and David said five. It's touching on sixteen-ish. Does this mean that they're available for public use?
So that's why we want it divided.
Or are they dedicated for this project?
These parking spaces are dedicated for this project.
Okay, even though they're on public open space?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they're on a privately owned piece of property that has a public open space zoning on it. I think that's an important distinction here. This is not a city-owned piece of property. We're not getting an easement, you know, for it, nor are we seeking one on this. So the designation is public open space, but this is, that's a zoning designation that is not what the property is in the real world, you know, such as like what we have along the base of the levees, for example. We have public open space zoning there, where that largely is in public ownership, and that designation is there for a reason, because we do not want development, you know, immediately at the toe of our levees. So, example.
Commissioner Galvin, do you have any questions?
No, I actually, that actually, I thought that made a lot of sense, the way you phrased that, and I had been a bit... It does make sense, but the question is... Where do you see sixteen, Russ? I only see seven.
I see twelve.
I don't need to count them. I don't think it's...
Everything on this side of the line, right, is just a...
I counted everything, that the line bisected. If the line bisected any spot, I counted that one.
Yeah, my apologies. I did say five. That is incorrect. It is five to, well, twelve, twelve and a half.
Five, twelve, something. You know, I mean, I guess my final comment before you close the public hearing and come back here is, wouldn't we then, if we only have just a little bit of area left, just let them put parking on the whole thing? Because we got minimal parking out there as it is now. Maybe.
I wouldn't like that idea, just...
I didn't say that, I just...
We certainly wouldn't favor paving over the entire property, you know, solely for parking for this facility. You know, if we, as long as the open space designation is there, it does provide an opportunity, you know, for some other, some other purpose, especially with the trail being present there now. But we will look at that through the general plan update, and we'll, as part of our planning commission consideration of that, we may, it may end up leaving it the same, may decide, you know, the council...
I guess my very final question, and I promise this will be empty. If we do leave it open space, and we decide we're going to put something there that isn't parking, can we take these parking spots back?
Well, if the city acquires that property, you know, from the private landowner, if you're talking about the city doing some type of public improvement there, the city would need to acquire that.
Talking about the spaces that we're moving the line for, so once it becomes part of, once you split the lot, it's no longer a public open space.
Well, the designation remains the same, even if we split the lot tonight. So, but I think what Commissioner Moore is asking about, if at some point in the future the city decided to do some type of public improvement on that property, first of all, we'd have to acquire those rights, either by acquiring an easement or the property in fee, first of all, since it is, you know, is and would remain in private ownership. So, you know, as part of that, those parts...
It would have made this much easier if they just developed the whole parcel and told us what we were going to have out there, you know? But, that's okay. Thank you.
I have no questions for the applicant. Explained everything well. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I look to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass, check in item number three. With the lot split. We're talking about the lot split.
Without the inclusion of the cell phone tower.
And could we all, would you also include the conditions listed on the memo from Sandra White this evening?
Absolutely. All of that.
And you also wanted to eliminate the monopole, monopine, cell tower from the site plan. So the condition, I drafted a condition that says basically, the optional monopole, monopine is not approved as part of the tentative map or conditional use permit. Is that sufficient?
We would not be necessarily precluding some future roof mount or facade mounted facility at this location. That would not be your intent, would that be correct?
I would still have to go through with these zoning amendments.
Yes.
Finally.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve without the monopile and with the memo addition.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
We haven't even got a second yet.
Commissioner Leibig, I believe, seconded the motion?
I haven't yet, but I'll second.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I think she did. Okay, roll call vote. Leibig?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Guerrero?
Aye.
Sandin?
Not present.
Perez?
Aye.
Olson?
Not present.
Galvan?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to read the appeal procedure, procedures into the record on this item, please. First of all, for zoning appeals, any interested party may appeal the decision of planning commissions matter to city council by filing a written appeal within the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. With respect to the tentative map, any interested party may appeal the decision of planning commissions matter to city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. If we have no other discussion, could I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Second.
Great, thank you.
And the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.